Eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to the drug-free lifestyle, no use of illegal drugs and no illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas businesses, governments, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, servant organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign. And whereas our community of Ketchikan, Alaska further commits its resources and spirit to ensure the success of the red ribbon campaign by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Robert Seaberson, mayor of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2018, as Red Ribbon Weeks. And encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Somebody here to see this today?
Go Seahawks on this kid. That's joking. On behalf of the Substance Abuse Task Force Committee, I humbly accept this red ribbon proclamation on behalf of not just those struggling with addiction, but also to encourage those to refrain from addiction. Thank you.
Thank you. We are getting other communications. Anything at this time? So bring this down, the first one to be heard. Bureau.
Good evening, Attorney General Mayor Seaberson and council members. I'm here to speak on the compensation update that Mr. Amalons put in the agenda. And if that's the only way that we're going to get some fair and equitable wages for the city and KPU employees, then I would recommend that you look forward with that compensation plan and implement it once it's done. If that's what has to be done to treat everybody fairly and equally with respect, then I encourage you to approve it and move forward.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Gerald Castle.
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Gerald Castle. I'm a 50-year resident of Ketchikan and resided nearly all of that there in Shoreline. I'd like to start with a little history. Fifteen years ago, we know Walmart came in and shortly after that, our taxes doubled, mine nearly did. So far, I haven't seen any benefits from that. It was very neatly around a lot of the expensive property, along with a lot of residential homes. Anyway, I guess to bring you up to date what I really came for, probably 30 years ago or so, I had a drain field put in at my place in Shoreline. And of course, it failed and I thought it's time to change. So I thought the logical place, and that drain field was approved by the city at that time, designed and approved. I called several times from the city to try to get a plan for a new drain field. There was no response. Said we don't do that anymore. So through a friend, I found out that you have to have it designed. So I had it designed by an engineer at the tune of about $908. And there, then it had to go to the state for their stamp of approval before it could get a contractor to finish it. That was another $530 with absolutely no help from the city. And by the time I got through, I probably have, well, it's about $5,000 to have it put in. And by the time I get a loan on there, I'm over $7,000 to get a drain field in. About seven years ago, I know for a fact the city had designed a water and sewer from the city to Ward Cove. And to my knowledge, something has been done with that. I guess all I'm saying is, I don't think that I'm, and along with others, are getting in fair shape for our dollars. I see no benefits from what the city's done. And I, with along with a lot of my friends, I'll luckily admit it this way, you can all hear a story and say, yeah, he's got a good point. But you have us right where you want us because you don't have to do anything. I can talk all I want and you could just sit here and collect taxes and that's what you're going to do. So I guess that's all I wanted to say is, I just don't feel that for my money, I'm getting any benefits from it. Thank you.
Gary, what is your address where you're at?
5224 Shoreline Drive.
Shoreline Drive, okay. And I, you know, I'm not sure what the city's oversight is on septic and drain fields. I think the borough has been handling the biggest majority of the management of that stuff outside the city when it's supposed to crack. They have a program to get it set. Carl, do we do anything to our wastewater division with that?
Not with septic fields out there, no. My understanding is that the borough, at one point, was offering their sledge pumping program to residents of Shoreline. I don't know if that's still in effect or not. I can certainly follow up and find out.
Do we ask for any permits or anything?
I'd have to defer to the Public Works Director, Mark.
Well, I certainly think-
I'm just trying to get some clarification for you, Gary.
Yeah, well, you can see the point. I thought, sure, at the time when the drain field was originally put in, was designed, I mean, it's not earth science to put a drain field in, but it was $900 to get it engineered. But I thought certainly the engineers from Ketchikan, or the city council, city could at least design a drain field. Anyway, I'm over $7,000 to get it in. I sleep good at night that way. Thank you.
Mark, the question was, do we do any permitting or anything in regards to drain fields and wastewater septic systems outside of them?
We don't do any design work for any drain fields. We may have done that in the past. We don't currently. Typically, if there's excavation involved, there are utilities involved, we have an excavation permit. That's about the limit of our involvement.
Well, I guess the thing I'd follow up on, is there a standardized design that a homeowner can utilize so he doesn't necessarily have to go out to get an engineer? I don't know.
I'm not aware of a standardized design that the state would accept and thereby avoid that cost.
Okay. My question is, because he's in the city limits, does he need to get any kind of excavation permit from the Public Works Department to do any work at all?
Well, if there's excavation involved, then yeah, he would be, we have an excavation permit and a locate permit where we're able to take a sketch from the applicant and then forward it to other divisions so that they could comment whether there's some buried utility there or something like that. Yeah, typically when there's excavation involved, there's a-
Because he lives in the borough, or was the former borough, and we haven't done any work out there, then we would not have any comments. Would that be correct?
Right, that'd be correct.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, typically, right. Thank you.
That, to get an installer, he cannot, he loses his license unless he has a stamp of approval from the state. I don't know what division that is. But the engineer did one thing and then he sends that to a division in the state for $530, they get their stamp of approval on that before he can go do any work. And of course, it's sent back to that same division for approval, take photos and complete the job. That's the way it went.
Thank you. Margaret Schwarzenberg, is that right? Close enough?
Good evening, that was correct. Thank you. My name, Margaret Schwarzenberg. I'm with Moffett and Nickel, and I'm the environmental scientist and lead of the permitting team working on the Rock Pinnacle removal project at birth two. I'm here to provide a summary of Amendment Three, which I believe is under number seven, New Business A2. And I'll be back at that time to provide you with a description of that amendment and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danita Dell, Sammocurie.
Good evening, I'm Danita Dell with First City Home Services, 400 Main Street. I just wanted to come and give you guys a brief update that the overnight warming center opened up on April 13th. So we've been open for five days, tonight will be sixth night. And today, we got the day shelter moved in as well. So we're fully under one roof again. Remodel's not quite complete, but to the point where we can operate while we're finishing up. Just wanted to let you know, so far, numbers-wise, we started out with seven on the first night. It's steadily gone up. Last night, we had 19 individuals, including four women. We've already had Ketchikan Police Departments brought in a couple of people to us. We've gotten at least one transfer from Peace Health. So the warming center is doing the job that we were hoping it would do. And I wanted to also see if you guys have any questions for us about the status.
Any questions?
Okay, great. We'll be open until April 13th. Since we did open up a little bit late, we'll stay open a little bit later as well. So we look forward to continuing to work with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Holstrom.
Good evening, I'm Jenny Holstrom, Senior Project Engineer for the KPU Electric Division. I'd just like to introduce Mr. Doug Johnson. Mr. Johnson's our regional engineer from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And he flew up from Portland today to be available to the council and to answer questions regarding item 7B1, the electric division maintenance staffing. So just wanted to introduce Mr. Johnson.
Doug Johnson. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the council that hasn't signed up? Seeing none, that brings us down to item five, the consent agenda. I don't think I have anything to add. Everything has multiple motions in regards to- I have a motion. Katie, would you call the roll, please? Would you like to speak?
Approval of minutes for a Goyser City Council meeting of October 4th and special council meetings of October 8th, 2018. Budget transfer for the approval of contract number 1828. The 2018-2019 agreement for lobbying services with Ray Manischowski and Associates. Revocable and limited permit to encroach on Platted Right-of-Way Tongus Building LLC. Budget transfers for the reconstruction of the Highliner parking lot wall, the adjacent parking lot and harbor ramp and facilities. A resolution number 182714 authorizing an application for the Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program for radio equipment.
Does anybody have any comments? Very none, would you please call the roll?
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Thank you.
That moves us on to unfinished business. We have none listed under the items, brings us to new business, item 781, resolution number 182712A, extended to the Ketchikan Gateway Borough Corporate Relations Committee for an additional two-year term to November 1st, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor? Yes. I'm going to move motion number two. I move the city council approved resolution number 182712B, extending the city of Ketchikan, Ketchikan Gateway Borough Corporate Relations Committee with out an end date and establish an effective date. Only that I think that's an effective committee and we need to keep it going. We don't need to do it every two years with the deal, so.
Anybody else? Please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Bring this down to item two, amendments number three on contract number 1716, planning and permitting and the removal of birth two rock pinnacle, Moffett and Nickel.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Mr. Seaberson.
I move the city council approved amendment number three in the amount of $87,979 to contract number 1716. Design of planning and permitting for the removal of birth two rock pinnacle between the city and Moffett and Nickel, bringing the total contract amount to $618,320. Authorize the funding from the Port Department's Rock Pinnacle Removal Capital Account and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city council. Second.
Been moved in second.
Did he say 87 or 89?
He said 87. So the correction is it's 89,979. Yep?
Let's get her done.
Carl, so this is additional stuff from Noah?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to defer to the Port and Harbor's Director and Moffett and Nickel for the specifics.
Port and Harbor's Director, Steve Copron. Would probably be beneficial if Margaret gave you just a very brief summary of what the request from Noah was and why we're kind of here tonight and then answer any questions. We're hoping that she's anticipated the questions in her very brief summary here in just a second, if that's all right with you. Thank you.
Thank you, hello again. Again, I'm the environmental lead for the permitting team, which includes a number of specialists in their area, biologists and blasting experts. All of the permit applications for the rock pinnacle removal have been submitted and undergoing review. Amendment Three is to accommodate and address some of the questions and requests that have come up from the regulatory agencies. Blasting is complex and they adhere to a number of regulations and have to adhere to them to provide the permits necessary to complete the project. As part of that process, we're looking to respond to those questions and requests, one of them being a request for an essential fish habitat assessment, which considers impacts to beneficial habitat for managed fishery species such as salmon and herring. So that will be part of that amendment, as well as responding to other requests and questions they have regarding our calculations that were done to consider impacts from the blasting on in-water noise and pressure on protected species.
We had several pre-application teleconferences with Noah and the Corps to try and flush out what we thought they were going to want in the application. We thought we had it all down. The essential fish habitat one, we did not anticipate. It hasn't been really done, especially for a rock pinnacle where there's nothing there. But so that's kind of a big ask and it's a big part of this amendment. It's happened, the subcontractors have to prepare the information for that report.
Yes, any question? I have some. Captain Member Bergeron?
Thank you. My question is, if there's nothing on that rock, can't we conduct to them with some kind of response that this information is not necessary? And it's kind of a two-part question. So you have budgeted 87,000 for this particular activity. And how do you derive that number and how are we billed for it? Is it actual time and materials? And so if it turns out to be nothing, then we won't spend it?
Correct. It's time and materials. So what we're trying to do is anticipate questions and requests that they may have. If we don't get them, we don't spend it. The essential fish habitat assessment is doing just that. It's providing them with the information so that they can see that we deem that there won't be adverse impacts to that area.
So how do you demonstrate that and do it in a very abbreviated fashion? Do you dive down there and look at the rock or what do you do?
You can actually, there actually is video of that area, but you can also assess given information you have from the surrounding area and other projects done. And then there's a large database that Noah has for the different species. You assess the different life stages of those fisheries, where they are during the time of year that you'll be doing the project as well. So you can really look at how the project may impact those. That's what you put together into this report for Noah to review.
So you think it'll take you $80,000 to put a report together for these guys that are going to tell you, basically, we're going to do this in the winter time, there's going to be minimal fishing impact, and it's going to cost that much money to do it?
That's a large part of it, yes. There's also scope and fee to respond to any additional questions and requests that they have. Some of them have included, as I mentioned, clarifications on how the calculations for in-water noise and overpressure from the blasting would occur. That has been quite a bit of back and forth. The blasting isn't something that the regulatory agencies see all the time. We have specialists on our team that permit those kinds of activities here in Alaska and nationwide, which has been really valuable in that we're not only responding back and saying, this is what we're planning to do, we're also pushing back and asking the regulatory agencies, why is this necessary? These are the methods we're looking to accommodate so that you get not only a permissible project, but one that's biddable and constructable on time and on schedule.
Okay, so you've responded to these kinds of requests before and so you're not covering new ground here.
No. This is, we've responded to different requests from Noah. What's different is sometimes with changing regulatory environment and staff, their questions can be really detail-oriented. And so you can provide that information back, you can anticipate some. And sometimes they're a little bit out of the box. And so we need our specialists to be able to provide them with the data that they don't have so that they can come to the same conclusions that we have in our documentation. Thank you.
Captain Member Kuz? This may be a question for Steve or you, ma'am. We know we're looking at doing birth one and two. And are we going to get the same kind of nonsense on essential fish habitat for birth one and two, which probably has more fish in it than that rock does? But I'm, you know where I am. I'm anti-government, federal government regulations, and this is ridiculous. It's a rock.
If I say something wrong, let me know. When we first started this, we were going to try and permit this as two separate projects, the pinnacle and birth one and two. In our first pre-application meeting with the Corps and our first pre-application meeting with Noah Marine Fisheries, they both said they would prefer to have it as a combined permit. Because they were, and they're not only looking at these two projects, they're looking at all the projects going on in the next year or two here, including the birth four project, which is, you know, a private one, and they just got permitted. The airport ferry landings. So they're looking, and the same person at the Corps is coordinating all these as one. So you're not getting, you know, this person's asking for this, how come that person didn't ask for it? One person's doing it. So they're looking at everything going on. But knowing that this was going to be sensitive and that there might be some different timelines, when they combined the permit, they did it in such a manner that to make it a little less onerous, to pull it back apart again, if that's what the city wanted to do or if the agencies wanted to do. Now, in this case, because one and two has stalled out a little bit, we can't afford to let one and two drag down the pinnacle. So this work does include a little bit of work to pull the permits apart again so we can go with one and two later. Here's the part, if I get it wrong. If by doing the essential fish habitat assessment for the pinnacle, that should be very translatable to one and two's permit when it does go in, probably sometime within this next year. So hopefully, we're not going to have to pay more money to get that part done. Because it's so close and relatable, it should-
Okay, well, that's what I'm after. I don't want to do this twice for something that's 100 feet away and the same thing, if we look at the permit that is on birth four now, there are some things that extend the whole length of the Narrows. And we certainly shouldn't have to redo it. Otherwise, we got an issue that maybe the president might take care of.
The big difference on one and two is going to be more with the sustained acoustic noise on the marine mammals. Yeah, we're blowing stuff up in the pinnacle, but it's only going to be five days over several months.
Yeah.
Whereas we're going to be doing pie work every day once one and two gets going. So that's going to, they're probably going to be more sensitive to wanting more noise information when we get into the one and two part. And they're going to study that a while. And that's what's going to drag down, if we keep these permits together, it's going to drag it down. And we really need this to get permitted in about nine months. They told us a nine to 12-month window for permitting. The permit went in being October. We want to go to bid with this by May, early June next year. So we really can't afford to let the pinnacle get slowed down by anything dealing with one and two. Or if we did push back, to answer your question, Mr. Bergeron, we could push back and say, we really don't think we need to do this. Even if we win that, it's going to drag it down by several months and we're going to lose the window, so.
Sounds like a lose-lose.
Sometimes when you're dealing with the bureaucracy like that, it can be, it can be a lose-lose situation. You've got to just make the best of it.
Any other question?
I have a quick one. So how much additional permitting are we going to have to do for one and two that we're, because we're pulling away from that portion of it, from the pinnacle project? I mean, how much additional cost are we looking at for the permitting?
Right, for birth one and two, a lot of that has been part of this combined permit application. So a lot of the base information is already there. If that doesn't change too extensively, then when permitting starts up for birth one and two again, that information can be resubmitted. You still have an application that requires some manit-massaging to make sure that the figures and the take analysis match just birth one and two. And most likely, they will require an essential fish habitat assessment for birth one and two. But this one takes in all that data now for the, pretty much the exact same place. So that baseline work is done. But there will be a requirement for, to complete permitting for birth one and two. I don't have a, necessarily a good idea off the top of my head.
Thank you. Any other question? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Flora?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. Move this on to item three, ordinance number 181885, adding a new chapter, 9.72 entitled fireworks, to the Ketchikan Municipal Code for reading.
Your Honor? I move the city council approved and first reading ordinance number 181885, adding a new chapter, 9.72 entitled fireworks, to the Ketchikan Municipal Code and establish an effective date.
Second, been moved in second, Mark.
I think staff did a really good job on this, breaking out the difference between the consumer and the display fireworks. Keeping the spirit that the community likes to have, a little fun, and also finding some practical date limitations. I think this is a really good start.
Anybody else?
I just found one little-
I just found one little typo. Otherwise, I thought it was really well-written.
All right. Anybody else? There are none? Please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Zingy?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
And Kifer.
And Kifer. Oh, yeah. That guy, too.
Yes.
Maybe you need to move in. I want to keep forgetting them.
Thank you. That moves as item four, classification compensation plan update.
Hey, Your Honor.
Mr. Good.
I move the City Council authorize the City Manager to enter into a professional service agreement with Ralph Anderson Associates for an update of the City, of Ketchikan, and KPU compensation plan in the amount of not exceed fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars and approve a budget transfer from the appropriate reserves of the General Fund to the Human Resources Division, two thousand eighteen Management Consulting Services Account Number
Second. Been moved in second, Dick.
Yeah, I remember last week, we disapproved doing this, but I personally do not believe that we have the wherewithal to do it. And if you follow the City Manager's report, it's going to delay it probably by a year. And I still, I still don't think we have the expertise to do it. And so I think we just, if this is the way we're going to proceed, we need to get on with it. And it's, and if you're going to compare it to what it's probably, what it could cost for show, it's chicken feed.
Your Honor.
Mr. Flora.
I think it would approach, almost approach the level of irresponsible if we didn't take advantage of an offer from a consulting firm to do work for the City of Ketchikan for free. We're probably not going to have that conversation ever again. If Ralph Anderson is willing to look at the two thousand fourteen study and calculate the implementation costs of the study that was done four years ago, I don't know why we wouldn't use that resource. I asked Mr. Amlon a few days ago via email, how many, what was the percentage of city employees that were craft positions, because those had not been studied? Those positions, first of all, are tied to a percentage of the journeyman lineman wages. So there's a formula there. Twenty-two point five percent of the total city workforce are craft employees. If we utilized the two thousand fourteen study, the consulting work that we have been offered at no expense to the city, and if we had to include a review or a compensation study of the craft workforce based on the HR department's own calculus, you're looking at two point six months of work. I don't know how fast the fifty-seven thousand dollar study would occur, but it seems to me the most logical thing to do is take advantage of the resources we have at hand, the work that's been done, and start there.
Carl. My concern, of course, is the fact that this, doing it in-house, it is going to take considerable, I think, more time. I remember when I went through this the first time. And then the statement, of course, that the two fourteen effort would not mitigate the need for undertaking a compensation, classification of the compensation for the general government and KPU. And I'd like to handle this all at once, otherwise we're only going to do a technical thing. And I would imagine that's the reason why you brought it back to the council, so that you wouldn't hold it in a matter.
I, I think there are two issues. One was immediately addressed in the staff report, is in terms of if the council wants to take a look at the entire workforce, we're just not staffed to do that. It's a two-part analysis. You've got to make sure the positions that we have, you're comparing comparable positions in other municipalities. And I'll give you a real easy example. The finance director in Ketchikan is not necessarily going to be the fin, be comparable to the finance director in municipal, municipality X. Because in all likelihood, municipality X is not going to have an electric division, not going to have a telecom division. And a lot of what our finance staff does relates to those utilities. So there's, there's a considerable effort in defining the classifications and then applying the compensation analysis to that. I understand what Councilmember Flora is saying relative to having Ralph Anderson and Associates, their offer to quantify the cost of the two thousand fourteen study. And they've offered to do that, and we can do that. So you're going to have a cost to apply the two thousand fourteen compensation determinations to our employees, with the exception of craft. Now, if we do the exception, if we, if we do the craft employees internally, we're not going to be doing those for two thousand fourteen, because you can't go retroactive in an, in an analysis like that. So we're going to do it for, in all likelihood, two thousand eighteen. So you'll have results for the KPU craft in terms of two thousand eighteen, and you'll have a cost to implement the two thousand fourteen compensation for the general government represented and nonrepresented, and the KPU nonrepresented or noncraft. So you'll have two different sets of data in terms of wages. In all likelihood, if we use the two thousand fourteen results, they're going to be out of date when you get them, because now we're four years later. And we knew in two thousand fourteen, we were some four point, I think, four percent So if, if the intent is to quantify the issue, if you want to know in today's dollars how we compare to market for both general government and KPU represented, nonrepresented, and craft, the best way to do it from my perspective is to have Ralph Anderson do it. They've got the resources, they've got the means, and they can turn it around in a fairly short period of time. I'm not going to make any prediction or any recommendation what you do with those results once you get them, but at least you'll be on a level playing field for, for both general government and KPU, and, and then you can start to sort through the issue. And, and in terms of issues that Mayor Schieferston has raised with me over the last couple of weeks, in terms of it's not just looking at what is fair market and applying it to Ketchikan, you've got to look at Ketchikan and its whole economic perspective and our ability to pay. All those things are going to have to be looked at, but at least you'll have a good data set to do that.
Yes, Mark.
What's, what do you, what would you think is a relatively short period of time for...
Marie, they, they say they could turn it around in ten, ten weeks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah.
I guess my concern is, we get this study, and we do what? The same thing we did in two thousand fourteen? I mean, it's not fair to our employees. We're bleeding people right now, and I just get the feeling that all we're doing is kicking it down the road again. And that's not fair to our people. And that's that we're having trouble recruiting, we're having trouble retaining, we don't have any succession planning. We really need to, if we're going to do this study, we need to be committed to do something.
Anybody? Yes.
We know that no matter who does the study, it's going to be a change. It's going, and we haven't decided where that money's coming from. We haven't decided how we're going to fund it. And I guess I have some of the same concerns that Councilmember Brisinge had, and I wasn't here in two thousand fourteen, so I'll take the responsibility for that. Once again, you move through the process, then it dies. We go through the process again, it dies again. What are we doing? So I guess we need to be willing at this point, you know, if, if we're going to go down this, this road to implement something at the end, rather than just say, we don't like the numbers. Because that's, that's, that's not fair for anybody.
So, Carl, so my understanding is we get this all back and, and have it reviewed and, and look at the cost, and then sit down and we'd have to have a, a contract opener with the utility to start renegotiations and, and how we're going to implement it? Is that...
Well, that, that would be my recommendation on the utility side. Let me make it very clear that what Ralph Anderson will do is they will go out and do the compensation analysis of the KPU craft positions not tied to the journeyman's wage. They will survey those positions against comparable utility positions. And we will then have to have discussions with IBEW relative to the council's direction is to implement, implement those wage adjustments. My recommendation to council would be that we'd have to visit with IBEW relative to breaking that tie to the journeyman linemen's wages. Without that, you continually just tie those employees' compensation to the journeyman lineman, and there's no real analysis of market based on what the positions are with other like jurisdictions. The other, the other point I would add, you get these results, with the exception of PSEA, who's lagging six months behind, come January, you'll be in the second, second year, a three-year contract with our unions. So, you know, we locked in cost of living adjustments for two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. How to go about implementing the results of the compensation study, you know, all that will have to be reviewed internally between staff and the council. And, and the context of, we've got eighteen to twenty-four months before a contract reopens again. Now, if, if council's inclined to do something prior to that, 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 that's fine, too. But it would be my recommendation that all of that's subject to negotiation with the unions, and that there's no implied commitment outside of collective bargaining that when we, if the council decides to undertake the comp plan update, that is automatically going to be implemented. It's going to have to be through the collective bargaining process. That would be my position. But at least you'll have the data. You'll, you'll know where we are in comparison to likewise government jurisdictions and utilities.
Anybody else? Moving forward, so please call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Flora?
No.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
No.
Bergeron?
I pass. No.
Okay.
That's still four to two. So we're still back to the point where I would expose it in-house.
I can understand, pardon me, that if we do it even partially in-house, it could be viewed as a fractured analysis. Well, the city's doing it in part, and Ralph Anderson's going to give us the cost of implementation. Or you could look at it as working collaboratively together. I'm just really concerned, as Councilmember Brisinge said, that we lather, rinse, and repeat just four years down the road. If we're concerned about the ability to even implement something that's four years old, why would we not be more concerned about the, the ability to pay to implement something four years newer?
Are we still, this is still in discussion?
No, we've already moved on past this. I'm just making sure that there was a, an understanding that by this failing, that we're still in the process of doing full B and M. We're back to square one. All right.
Can I ask, square one? So in other words, we are, are we going to move forward with two thousand fourteen or look at it? Or is that a motion that would have to be made?
We have to bring some...
Yeah, we already gave staff direction at the last meeting.
So that's still, that's still, is still in place?
Yeah.
If we want some different, we'll have to change it next meeting.
So, so another was still talking about this just a little bit. The reason that I voted that was a comment that Mr. Kifer brought up, which was, what's the intent of the council after we get the results of this? And so, you know, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like to, can, can I make a motion to reconsider my vote?
You may. Does the vote reconsider need any...
It needs a second.
I'll send you.
It's been seconded. Deb?
I haven't had a lot of time to, to think about this particular issue, because we have a lot of things going on with our agenda tonight. But I think treating our employees fairly and effectively, I think is certainly the intent of everybody here at this table. I, I think that I'd like to reconsider my vote, vote in the affirmative. And then I guess the discussion later on down the line is what we're going to do as far as what the results of that compensation study are and, you know, to, to budget for it. And I just, I don't know what the big picture is there. So I'd like to change my vote.
We have to make a new roll or just...
We do have to do a roll call, and this is a motion to reconsider, which would put the previous motion back on the table.
Okay, so we have a motion for reconsideration.
Gage?
No.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Zingy?
No.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
No.
Kuss?
Yes.
Okay, it's a tie.
Yes.
So it's back on the table, the motion to higher votes in session.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest a five-minute recess?
Yep. Stand and recess. Point, I would like to ask that one of the council members make a motion to defer this until after our executive session. We have another one dealing with compensation.
So moved.
Second? In second? Discussion?
No.
No discussion then for them. It's up for me. Call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. That brings us down to item five, financial and compliance audit for the year end December thirty-third, two thousand eighteen. There's two motions.
Hey, Your Honor.
Yes.
Mr. Good. Alternative motion number one, I move the City Council authorize the finance director to negotiate a contract with Testor and Wadpole. a contract with Testor and Wadpole LLC for the financial and compliance audit of the city of Ketchikan for the year ending December 31, 2018. Said contract to be submitted to the City Council for formal consideration and approval.
Second.
And move in second? Dick, anything?
Not really. It just seems about the most reasonable way to go for the city's condition right now.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please call the roll.
Kifer?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
Burshon?
Aye.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
And Flora?
Yes.
That's moved to the passes. And I'm gonna take my effect with verdicts before we get into some lengthy presentation. I was gonna hold this until we end, so we could take our fine ice cream into the executive session.
We still can.
No, we still can. But I'd like to read Resolution Number 18-2715. A resolution of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska honoring Catherine M. Suter, Kathleen, for her years of service as the City of Ketchikan and establish and effective tape. Whereas Catherine Katie Suter has been employed by the City of Ketchikan as the city clerk since February 1st, 1997, and will retire on May 3rd, 2019. And whereas Clerk Suter started her career with the City of Ketchikan in 1985 as a customer service representative for the finance department, and then served in temporary capacity for numerous departments and divisions of the City of Ketchikan Public Utilities, wherein she developed and working understanding many facets of the municipal and utility operation. And whereas Clerk Suter has served under two long-serving mayors and numerous city council members during her tenure, and assured the accuracy and accessibility of many regular and special local and general elections. And whereas Clerk Suter attained certification as Certified Municipal Clerk, Master Municipal Clerk, and obtained her bachelor's degree in business with a major in human resource management. And whereas Clerk Suter was instrumental in the completion of significant projects, including the development of the migration of the city's current website, live streaming, and archiving city council meetings, codifying the Ketchikan Municipal Code, digitally archiving historic city documents, transitioning from paper to digital agenda management, developing and architecting and training programs for the city council and community advisory board members, and implementing a cemetery management software system. And whereas Clerk Suter has promoted the city's role in government by serving four years on the executive board of the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks as president, second vice president, immediate past president, and treasurer. And whereas Clerk Suter was honored in 2013 by the Alaska Association of Municipal Clerks as the recipient of the prestigious Clerk of the Year Award. And whereas Clerk Suter was consistently and capability served the City of Ketchikan and its citizens, and has been dedicated to the highest principle of community service for more than 33 years, now therefore being resolved by the City Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska as follows. Section one, the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska recognizes and commands City Clerk Suter for her dedicated service and significant contributions to the City of Ketchikan and the community. Section two, the Council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska wishes Clerk Suter and her family all the success in her future endeavors. Section three, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon passing. That's been approved by duly constituted form of the City Council for the City of Ketchikan on this, the 18th day of October, 2018. Katie, I can't say enough, and thank you for all your service. Any words?
Can I go home now?
You've got four more hours to go.
It's the longest meeting you've had.
I really think there should be words, some words of wisdom that she could offer to us. She's been at it a lot longer than any of us sitting here, I think.
Here's your chance.
Well, I can say that it has been an absolute pleasure, not only working for the councils I work for, President One included, but also all of the people I've worked with, many of you who are sitting in this room. It's just been amazing, really. I can't think of any individual who pestered me enough that made me dislike them. It's been a wonderful career. I've so enjoyed serving the public. That has been my greatest pleasure, I think. Because in the clerk's office, you get people from everywhere, every walk of life. Our number, for some reason, is the first number that information tells people to call. So we hear from people all the time. And it truly is a public service in that office. The cemetery management, which we have a four-hour training on today, it'll be up soon, is really gonna be a great benefit for the community, as well as making all of the records that we have accessible to the community. It's just been a joy, such a joy. Do we need to pass that?
We'd have that.
Do we need to do, oh, was it done in? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
She didn't read it, so much she knows.
I didn't see it on my agenda.
Not on hers. It was hidden from her.
All right. Well, that brings us down to item B in our new business. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission responds to KPU owner's dam safety program ODSP staffing review. Let's open that report up. There's a motion we had?
Your Honor, I move the City Council Directors, Director General Manager to take such action regarding the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's response to KPU's owner's dam safety plan staffing review as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Second.
Been moving second? Carl?
Mr. Mayor, as you'll recall, some time ago, we brought to you a report indicating that FERC had expressed some concern about our level of staffing regarding our hydroelectric plants. Staff had put together a recommendation of the addition of two power plant mechanic positions. The council mulled that over and opted to go with one mechanic and one laborer position. We submitted that to FERC, which responded that, based on its review, they still believe that two mechanic positions were in the best interest of the community. And we indicated that if the council wanted to engage in discussion with FERC relative to the issue, that they had offered to send a representative to Ketchikan. That brings us to tonight. The FERC representative is here, answer questions you may have. Want to come up and speak to the agency's position, and I'm sure the council will have questions.
Yeah. So, yeah, I was, we came up and met with the city or the Public Utilities earlier this year in September to discuss this. Our concern is that, well, it's, you know, getting additional staff is always a good thing. But the concern was that, you know, two mechanics does not equal a mechanic and a laborer. When you need a mechanic, you need a mechanic, not a laborer. And I think it's kind of exemplified right now with the current drought. From what I understand, you're running diesel and cut to the bone on the mechanic staff. And our concern is that, you know, when resources are cut like that, that things start going Mistakes happen, equipment starts to fail, and you could have an incident that would be disruptive to your power supply, if not cause public safety issues in the future. So obviously, we're not, we can't require you to hire two mechanics, but we certainly urge the city to, City Council, to follow the original recommendations and get two mechanics on board.
And so I guess, somebody, anybody else have anything to say? I guess some of the questions I have in the first part is, you know, those diesels haven't been run a lot in the last five years because of the intertie. We talked a little bit about that in the report here. And so how do you staff for an event such like we have now that is not, at this point, considered the norm?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I think, you know, having, it's like, do you want to spend the money right now to have the people available? It's kind of hard to bring somebody in just when you need them. Secondly, you've added the Whitman Lake project, which requires, you know, it just spreads you that much thinner. So I think just having those people on board and doing the, being available to do the job, and from what I understand is that the current staff are extremely overworked. I believe they're on a seven-day shift right now. So it seems to me that you really do need those two mechanics.
Well, one of the things that have changed since this report was developed is the fact that there's been an agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the South Alaska Power Agency, and the city is shedding two 10-megawatt plants that there will no longer be provided maintenance for. So again, we're probably back close to even understanding that diesels are probably a little bit more maintenance than what you would do on a large hydro project, there's still man-hours involved in that. And then, as I read through the report, there was a number of items in regard to maintenance that I could view as more labor-oriented than powerhouse mechanics. I mean, I could hire an electrician to come and mow my lawn, but that's not probably the most efficient way to do that. And so when you talk about, you know, clean them roads and culverts and bridges and drains and stuff like that, that's common stuff. We do it through the Public Works Department all the time. And then there are some repairs and inspections that probably the first time we're gonna do those through contract services, and then the ongoing maintenance, visual inspection of the, we don't have that much time, you know, the visual inspection outside, I don't think takes a lot of time during the year to do that. You can walk it in relatively short time. Right. And then there's a lot of repair to KPU buildings and facilities, and, you know, building stairways and awnings and stuff, that even in Mr. Favillo's letter to the city in regards to manpower, he thought it was very inefficient to use powerhouse mechanics who should be working on the powerhouse engine to do minor maintenance work. So after that review, the fact that we've shed a couple of large projects, I don't, I don't, I mean, I believe that our mechanics go above and beyond. They're dedicated to the work that they do. And we've had periods where we've had to run the diesels, and presently, we're probably gonna run them for quite a bit this year and into next year because of the issue that we had. But again, this may not, to me, be the norm, at least I hope not, in regard to our diesel.
Yeah.
And so I am a little concerned how we staff for that. And then I do believe that the apprentice program is appropriate. We've got to figure out how to move into that.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if the laborer you hire that does labor work is your apprentice.
That could be.
You know, how we could do that. So that's why we, and with the, with the deal with Swan Lake, that the one and the one made more sense to, I think, to some members of the council. And I know Denny's up here, so, you know, go ahead. So I guess I want to hear from what you think, Dick.
Yeah, can I respond to some of those comments? You're right that KPU is turning over the operation of Swan Lake back to SEPA, but those positions were not considered in this analysis, so those have never been a part of what we're looking at now. I'm kind of regretting, including my wish list of items that you referred to. That was my list for one month, things that needed to get done. And you're right, some of them are things that laborers can do, and they probably will be doing them. That wasn't specific to the mechanics, but just a number of things that need to be done, a number of things that are specific to mechanics, too. When I put together my analysis, I was looking at it from my perspective as the chief dam safety engineer, so kind of focusing on the dam safety items. But the mechanics, that's just one part of their responsibilities. They also, you know, they're the power plants, the units, the auxiliary systems, you know, I didn't comment on, there's the diesel generators, there's the, all our other facilities. Those I really didn't address in my report. I hoped somebody else would, but it didn't get in there. But there are a lot more responsibilities than what were listed there, and those are mostly specific to mechanics. You're right, there are a lot of things that laborers can and do do, like the general maintenance, and they're important to us. But I think our greater need right now is for the mechanical side of things. And it is critical now, when we're running the diesels, we are, it's a critical point right now, but this was initiated almost two years ago, you know, way before, you know, when we weren't running diesels, there was still a problem that we saw. So it's just worse right now, so.
So in regard to the mechanics that we have available, how many powerhouse mechanics do we have that are actually working in the powerhouse, providing the coverage?
Available to work in the powerhouse?
How many do, yeah, how many, no, not available.
How many of that position?
How many actually doing it?
Is it five?
I'll hear Dandy here, yeah.
I think there are five mechanics and one foreman, which is, a foreman should not be the working mechanic. There's a lot else to do.
Exactly.
So the, two of the powerhouse mechanics work at the vehicle shop on Parish Street, is that correct?
Until we need them elsewhere, and then we, and then we assign them elsewhere.
So are they, are they working at the power plants now?
They do, yes.
Okay. So. They're helping manual shifts?
Well, we, this, this particular situation we have, the diesel campaign, is really, has really, really strained us. So with the five people, we've split everybody up into shifts, and so it's very difficult to get people out in the field on the FERC side, right? So you're just hearing just the FERC folks here addressing the fact that we're shy mechanics. But now that.
On the hydro side.
But now that, now we're in the diesel campaign, I don't have enough people for the, to maintain the diesels either. And so the situation I have is I can't do both. So either I can do one, I can do the other, and that's why we brought this back, hoping that we could expand that to two mechanics. The other part that you don't see here with the FERC aspect and dam safety, and that is the Title V air quality permit stuff that we have to do maintaining the diesel engines. So there's a tremendous amount of data gathering and reporting. And the other issue is, you probably know, but we send the mechanics out to get a calibrated eye on opacity, right? So as these diesels run, they additionally have to go and take reports constantly on opacity. What makes the mechanic a better candidate is if they see the opacity, take a particular change, they can do corrective action. Now, it's not to say that we couldn't train a laborer, and there are some very, very great laborers, so that's, that can work. But the skill set that you normally get in a mechanic, they identify and they can take the corrective action without additional direction, and that's what we were asking for. So right now, it's like super critical. I don't know how we pulled through this past week, and that was just crazy. So it would have been interesting to watch two groups tear apart two diesel engines, sharing a gantry crane, and putting them back together in two days so that Monday, or Sunday at midnight, we could be back on the diesel floor with diesel generation. That was just wild, that they pull it out. Now, the other activity that we don't see is fueling these diesel engines, holy smokers, 30,000 gallons a day? We go through a 400,000 gallon tank in less than two weeks. We have to ship fuel daily to Point Higgins. So, and then we have a very elaborate Schweppes program. So, and then we have a very elaborate Schweppes program. So it's very difficult to man all that with these people. That's why we asked for two additional.
So Andy, is, is our crew fueling those things, or do we just have a contractor fueling? How's that work?
Our, our people go with them. We're responsible for a Schweppes, a, what do you call it? It's a S P C C. So we have to be there, we have to be there in, for these large fuel transfers.
So, I mean, going out and fueling diesel north town, do we send an operator with them to do that?
Yes, and it's inside a substation as well.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not saying that we don't, I just want to understand it, because you talked about two mechanics, one on the FERC side and one on some other side, so I, I don't completely understand that, I guess, is my problem, and how we manage that.
Oh, I'm sorry, so when I, when I brought that up, we're talking about compliance issues, and, and so FERC is one of those things that we have to be compliant in, most noteworthy is the dam safety program. But also, ADEC has a responsibility for us as well, compliance, and that is the air quality permit stuff. And it also includes oil analysis with ADEC as well for the, for the diesel engines. So that was all I was saying, is that right now, it's really difficult taking care of both halves, hydro as well as the diesel, and I'm asking for help.
Okay, okay, I get that. Take the other.
I think that we need to consider, I just look at this, there's five guys running this whole show. And what if, I mean, I get, like, you have one mechanic, and if something goes wrong, or he ends up getting sick, or something happens, then we have nobody.
Well, I have one out right now.
Right. So, yeah, you're done.
Right, it's, it's critical.
So we're kind of, we're, we don't even have anyone to bring in if there was a need.
I brought back, yeah, I brought back a retiree that helped us through the weekend, and fantastic work, this particular person. And I take my hat off to him. Only problem is, is retiree's limited number of hours he can work, and so at some point in time, you got to tell him, thanks, I'll see you next month. The other thing that was really sad, that retiree is extremely gifted, I didn't have an extra person to be with him to pick that up. That was the sad part. And of course, I brought this to this council's attention a year ago with that same, hoping that I could staff and share some information before he departed. So, that's right.
And so to under, to understand, I know we got mechanics here, probably in the audience, but what does their, what does their shift look like? What do they, I mean, I think they're doing a lot of checking to make sure that nothing's falling apart, or squirting oil, or fuels, or coolant.
There is that, yes.
Yeah, but what, what do they do during their shift in regards when we're running like this right now? Because we got to have men, we have one mechanic and, are the powerhouse operators, powerhouse mechanics, or are they just powerhouse operators?
We have both. So we have powerhouse operators that dispatch the energy and powerhouse mechanics that maintain the equipment running.
Yeah, I didn't know that, whether we had the powerhouse operator, it's their title, that they were, they were both, I guess, operator mechanic, I don't-
Oh, the, right. We have two positions that can go both ways when, when staffing allows, but we had, we had two open positions on the operator side, and that takes precedence, so those people moved into those positions. We just got a new, we just got a new operator now. He's in training, he'll be going through all those. We, we need one more, but that's where we're at.
Okay, okay. All right.
Yeah, Andy, so if we were to hire two more mechanics and an operator, whatever else, and we go back to what's been normal for the last six years plus, and we're not running these diesels except to keep them running, what are we going to do with those three people?
We have, we have a backlog in the powerhouses with the hydro. So, so we will definitely be able to utilize them in that capacity.
So why don't we do that backlog with a contractor? Right now, get it out of the way?
Well, it, it would be with us for quite a bit, and then the other thing, too, is the intimate knowledge. For instance, we are expecting to get a good rainfall here, a good rainfall tomorrow, and maybe through the, through the weekend, in the next week. So with that, we have to make stream flow adjustments at Whitman, for instance. It would be difficult for us to try to educate or bring on a contractor to do that without having the internal knowledge, just going out there and doing it, as, as those, as those rainfalls change.
Okay, so you're going to walk out tomorrow and hire two qualified mechanics that can do that?
Well, it, it may take a few weeks, but eventually we will, we'll get on it. It may actually take a couple of years before they get the, the type of depth specific to, to our needs, but the sooner the better.
Yeah, I don't think I disagree, so, thank you. Any other questions, Brad?
So we have to, I assume we have to amend the motion, it just says determined.
It says, right, determined appropriate by the city council. So our last correction was, we were going to hire one mechanic and one temporary, or one laborer, is that correct? So if there's a desire to change that, I would look for a motion at this time?
You want me?
Yeah.
I move that we hire two mechanics instead of one mechanic and one laborer.
You move second, further discussion? Hearing none? This council roll?
Kuz?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Singy?
Yes.
Burshra?
I.
Gage?
Yes.
That's quarter one?
Five.
Five to one. That brings us down to item B2, Presentation of Water Filtration Facility Plan, CH2M Hill Engineering, Inc., and only own subsidiary of Jacob Engineering, Inc. Do I have a motion? It just a presentation, Carl.
Mr. Mayor, as you'll recall, several months ago, you brought a proposal to the city council to start thinking about what we might have to consider if we lost our filtration avoidance waiver. And then council agreed to commission a report through CH2M Hill to take a look at what we would have to do if filtration were to be mandated on us by EPA and AGEC. We sent out in the packet CH2M Hill's report. They've worked closely over the last several months with Mr. Kleiner and water division staff, and Floyd Damaron, who most of you know, is here tonight to present the study, and we're not looking for any formal action, but Floyd's here to answer any questions that you may have. So I'm going to turn it over to Floyd.
Thank you very much. Mayor, so very good to see you again, and council members. Been coming to a lot of meetings over the years, and a little bit about me, I've been doing this for 45 years statewide, and my passion is helping municipalities improve their water systems, develop water supplies, treat the water in proper compliance with all the regulations. So you invited me here tonight to speak to you. Been working with KPU now for about 30 years on various projects. Let's see, we need to get this up to the present mode. Sorry, just getting set up here. So we've been working on quite a few projects, and a lot of those have come before the council over the years. But I would like to say that, first off, KPU is in full compliance with all drinking water regulations, and John Kleiner, David Johnston, and your staff have done an excellent job to that regard. So tonight's presentation is on the Water Filtration Facility Plan, which is this document which was completed recently, and I think each of you should have a copy of that. And the purpose of this study was to update work that we did back starting in 1988, so 30 years ago exactly, we produced this report, which demonstrated what it would take to filter Ketchikan's water. And one of the reasons we did that is the 1986 amendments to the Safe Drinking Water Act said that communities that use surface water need to filter their water. That was a big, was a very, very big deal, because at that time, many, many communities, such as New York City, Seattle, San Francisco, many, many communities were not filtering their water, and the federal government was saying, you need to start filtering your water. So in 1990, you hired us and we completed this study, it's completed in 91, saying if you need to filter your water, in $91, at 9 million gallons a day, it's going to cost a $20 million project and roughly a million dollars a year to filter the water. But because of the political influence of communities like New York, when the surface water treatment rule came out in 1989, they allowed an exemption for communities that met very stringent criteria, saying you don't have to filter your water. Ketchikan didn't know if they would qualify for that or not, and one of the reasons is it was a disease outbreak. One of the few documented disease outbreaks in the entire state of Alaska happened right here. And that was documented and isolated to the Carana Water Source, which has since been completely removed from your water system. But Ketchikan didn't know if that historical fact would impede filtration avoidance or not, so we completed the study, and I think, I would say fortunately, because of the high quality of water, the application was approved to not filter the water. And at that point, KPU stopped pursuing the requirement to filter, and it was going to be a $20 million construction project and a million dollars a year. So to this day, Ketchikan is a, remains a filtration avoidance community. So, let me, let's see. So, got to go the other way here. So why do this study now? What is, what is the reason for that? And recently, the watershed has shown some changes, and we've seen higher organics in the water, and disinfection byproducts, which is one of the items that's regulated. And it's been more challenging for KPU to come, to stay into compliance, and in fact, a few years ago, there was a compliance order by consent negotiated with the state of Alaska. And Ketchikan met all of those requirements. And to date, those improvements have been found to be actually quite effective. But what would, what would cause Ketchikan in the future to filter the water? And that would be potentially if there's excess microbes in the raw water, or particulates in the water, or potentially more stringent regulations. And we don't know of any regulations now that are pending that would cause you to have to filter your water, but we don't know what would happen in the future in terms of federal regulations. So in our study, we said, what would it take to filter the water? So we looked at three filtration methods on three different treatment plant sites, and then we looked at, what would it cost to do that, and how would those projects be funded? So we looked at nine alternatives in the system. So this is a schematic view of your watersheds here and of your treatment systems. And so you've been incrementally improving your treatment. As you know, we've gone to chloramination here in Ketchikan, and UV disinfection was put into place, there's a watershed control program. But you have three disinfection barriers for microbes, and that's very good. Not very many communities have all three. But if the fecal coliforms in your raw water were to go up, there's a turbidity requirement. The federal government, and now the state of Alaska, says you can have no more than five turbidity events in 10 years, and you've had two, so that's, that's good, that you've only had two, but if incidences were to occur in the watershed where turbidity went up, that would be of concern. But you've been providing high-quality, safe waters, protected public health, but if any of those things change, there could be an order from the state of Alaska, and maybe only allowing you six, eight, or at the most 10 years to come into compliance with what turns out to be a very costly project. So we looked at the current technology, and the most feasible way for Ketchikan to filter the water would be granular, granular media filter beds, and these would operate by gravity. You would run water in over the top of this granular media. It would filter down through the media. This media could be six or seven feet thick, and you'd need, these would be very, very large concrete basins to give you your demand of 12 million gallons a day. Where there are things called synthetic engineered membranes, which are shown on the right, and these are pressure vessels, where there are engineered products, where the water, water molecules, through pressure force, through these membranes, and contaminants are excluded. So let's compare filtration methods. We, we rated different filtration methods on 12 criteria, such as the footprint, and how many chemicals do they use, and automation and cost, obviously, is a big one. And so we looked at granular media filtration, if a box is green, that's excellent, yellow is medium or relatively good. If you want to stop chloramination, you would have to add activated- You'd have to add activated carbon, which could be quite costly. And then, then there's the membranes, and we went through these 12 criteria, but the bottom line is summarized in this slide, where we conclude that any of those three will be very good at filtering your water and giving you the capacity you need. We would suggest that before you spent the money to build a filter plant, there'd be some additional water testing, especially if there are changes occurring in the watershed. We're not sure why those are occurring, but there's maybe more animals, different plant life, maybe different species with changes in climate. But the one important thing is, is we're sure that if you added activated carbon, which is fairly expensive, but if you did that, you could go back to free chlorine in your distribution system and not have to use fluorines, if that's something the council wanted to consider. So we'll show you the cost of that. So site number one is next to your current UV disinfection facility, and the, this, this building there is the UV disinfection facility, and to the east of that building, there is a site that Ketchikan has. It's the smallest site we looked at, but it'd be a good candidate for a membrane plant, especially if the backwash water could be put into the sewer that's right there. So here's the existing UV building, and this is the existing two-point chlorination system. And you would have multiple buildings there. This would be a pretty tight site, but it's quite doable. Site number two we looked at, Walker Field. We discounted Walker Field fairly quickly, because our belief is you'd have to relocate the ball field that's there, acquire the property, develop a new ball field. We think that's a minimum of $4 million, so we, we discounted site two, we think it provides- We think it provides high value to the community under its current use. Site three up near Fawn Lake has a, has a large amount of area. It'd be a very good site for the gravity filters. It would require a new road, new power line. And this is a schematic of what it would look like if you developed that site. You'd have a filter building, a chemical building, clarewell. You'd have various facilities there that would be relatively easy to develop. So let's look at costs. Obviously, that's an important consideration. Let me get through my notes here. The granular filtration is the site that would be at Fawn Lake, or if you wanted to add activated carbon. That's site number one, near your existing UV building would be your membrane site. So we've done a twenty-five-year present analysis and in-round numbers, they're essentially around a hundred million dollars in present value cost. The capital cost is the blue bars. So you see the membrane plant, because it has a much smaller footprint, is a lower cost. But this is a cost per year, one point two million, two point two million, because the activated carbon is a more expensive system to operate and maintain, and two million per year for membranes. So someone would say, well, how would we handle such costs? And there used to be a good grant program in Alaska that has been eliminated and no longer in place. So there's a state revolving loan fund and they could fund a hundred percent of the project. There's called the WIFIA project, which was just reauthorized. I think the president just signed WIFIA, I believe, this week. And several billion dollars are in that project and only fund forty-nine percent of your project. USDA in Alaska this year has thirty million dollars in loans and a few grants. Or you could sell local bonds. So what, what would be the impact to a typical residential user? And, and obviously it'd be substantial. The current rate in round numbers for residential customers, fifty-five dollars a month. And the new rate would be between eighty-five and a hundred and thirty-five dollars. And it's not really easy to read, but this is if it's a hundred percent local funded. Or if you could get grants, and we're not sure if you could get your hands on grants, but we went all the way up, even if you could get a seventy-five percent grant, what would the, what would the rate be? It would go up still seventy percent compared to what it is now. KPU's current revenue requirements are three point nine million a year. And any of these projects that you construct would more than double the revenue requirements. So, and we don't know what grant availability would be. What kind of schedule would you need to implement the project? And if you'll notice, we don't have funding listed here. This is independent of what will be going on in a parallel manner on funding. But once you knew you had funding, it's about a six to eight-year project. And so if the state of Alaska were to order you to filter and they put you on an eight-year schedule, there's a whole funding element that is not even shown here. So in summary, Ketchikan's pristine unfiltered water from Ketchikan lakes and granite basin has provided the city of Ketchikan with decades of good, clean water. And defying filtration is saving you three or four million dollars a year. And Mayor Seaver says, maybe ten years ago or so, someone at the council asked me, what did I think personally Ketchikan was saving per year by not filtering the water? And at that time, I said one to two million dollars and I was off. It's really three to four million dollars a year. Just think about the implications of that to the community. From my perspective as a water professional, I think a filtration plan is not needed as long as public health is being fully protected and you're able to comply with the regulations. However, if filtration ever does become appropriate, you now know from a broad ten-thousand-foot perspective, what kind of project that would entail. So I'd like to thank John Kleniger, David Johnston, Bob Newell helped us with our draft report, review, comments and working with us. And I'm open to any questions you would have. And thank you. And do we need to shut this down, Brian?
Yeah.
So Floyd, are there other communities in the state of Alaska at this particular time that are being forced into filtration?
There are no communities at this time that are being forced into filtration. Juno recently volunteered to go to filtration. Their avoidant source on Salmon Creek, which I've worked on, was only available to them six, seven, eight months out of the year because of turbidity events and they had to take it offline. And they've since decided they need a year-round supply. The city of Cordoba has three filtration avoidance, separate water sources for your community. The city of Kodiak has two. The city of Alaska has one. And all those communities are successfully meeting requirements, but like you, they had to build UV disinfection projects. They've had to spend a substantial amount of money, but they are not being forced to filter. That may not be true in the Lower Forty-Eight, but in Alaska, that's, it's not happening now.
And then, we had some concerns and issues about the reservoir and the increase in organics and different things. Has that, has that leveled off?
Mayor Silver said, no. The organics, the raw water organics have not leveled off. And that's why you were, to avoid filtration, that's why you were required to go to chloramination. And then you've gone to the second dose of chlorine, which makes your chlorine more efficient. But there's things happening in the watershed that have increased raw water organics substantially over where they were twenty years ago. So did I answer your question specifically?
Yes.
They're not going down. And if we were to have an unusual event, climate-wise, and maybe it would be a very low water flow and things happening in the watershed, there's no assurance that the system you have now will keep you in compliance a hundred percent of the time. But just because you ought to go, go out of compliance for one period of time doesn't mean you would be instantly ordered to filter. But if it became a long-term issue that wasn't able to be resolved, that's what might force you into filtration.
Nate?
Couple, couple ones. First of all, what are some of the turbidity, what causes the turbidity situations that could be effective for more than six and a ten-year period?
Turbidity, a good question, Mayor Silverson, Councilmember Vifer. The situation could be storm in the watershed that could stir up water. It could be thermal events that happen. There could be minor erosion or slides. You've had at least two slides in the past that fortunately, the state of Alaska viewed those as unique events and not counting against Ketchikan. But if that, if turbidity were to persist and stay high, there's nothing in your system now that removes turbidity. We have UV light and we got chlorine and we're putting in soda ash for corrosion control, for example. None of those remove turbidity. So you have, you have what's coming. So did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. The other quick question, maybe I just don't understand the system as much as I thought I did. I understand how our water gets from Ketchikan lakes to the current chlorination, the chlor- chlorine. I understand how it would get to Walker Field. How, how would it get to Fawn Mountain?
It would flow by gravity. There's, there's enough head on the pipe that's there that would allow you to bring water into that site and flow through your filters by gravity and by gravity flow to town. The disadvantage on the site, at site one, is there's enough head loss through those membranes that you would have to put in a low-head pump station and add additional energy to that water so it could go to your customers at the highest elevations. We did not look at a site that couldn't be supplied by gravity from your existing water system.
One of the sites that I was, I thought that might be appropriate, at some point, we're going to have to upgrade, probably move the KPU warehouse facility on Fair Street right next to the water pipe coming down. And so that might be an opportune place to put, because of the size, probably a membrane plant.
That, I know exactly where you're speaking there, Mayor Silverson. That is a pretty limited site. It could potentially be a site appropriate for a membrane plant.
But the cost of the time, because we have to relocate a facility.
But from my perspective, and I've been working with Ketchikan a long time, I think the fact that you've been able to avoid filtration may be of a much higher value than, than people actually realize. And as long as you're protecting public health, you're meeting the regulations that are put in place to protect public health, why take the, why take the effort to commit to a project that has a present value of a hundred million dollars? If you ever want to do that, I'd be happy to design it for you.
Can you explain the gravity flow versus the pump station, so having it up at the third site that you were talking about, Fawn Mountain?
Yes, Mayor Silverson and Councilmember Gage. Good question. At the, at the current site where the UV facility is, there is enough head now to fill the, the reservoir there on a, on Showen Bar. Just, just enough head. And when you go through the membranes, you may, I'm not sure if I know the exact number, but you may knock twenty or thirty feet of head off of the available head, forcing those molecules through the membrane. And so to serve your current infrastructure, that water needs to be boosted back up so you can keep your reservoirs full. Whereas at the remote site up near Fawn Lake, that is a high enough elevation that even though you have the head loss going through the sand filters, or even if you had membranes that are, that's at a high enough elevation that will drive the water into the system and allow you to keep your reservoirs full. So did I answer your question?
So that's cheaper.
Not pumping water saves money.
That's what I was getting at.
The, the upper site has a disadvantage in that because of its remoteness, there would be cost for a road and a power line. There's no, there's no utilities up there now. But that is an excellent site to develop if you wanted to go to a granular media filtration site. The lower site is not large enough for any type of granular media system. And so if you're ordered to filter in the future for whatever reason, or if you as a body decide you want at some point to filter the water, I'd strongly recommend taking our, our little study and taking that to the next level to make sure you're picking the right site, you really understand the water quality and picking the right process so you're making the best decision for the community. As you can see, the costs are almost the same, whichever way you go. From a ten-thousand-foot standpoint, all three projects have a present worth value of around a hundred million dollars. When you get into a more detailed study and make those final decisions, you'll make the right decisions to get the best value. But whatever you do is going to be expensive.
I think for clarification, when you said Fawn Mountain, or Fawn Lake, instead of Fawn Mountain, you know, there's two different sites. We have, we have Fawn Mountain where we have a school system and a road.
Yeah, I was trying to imagine a pot water back going out there.
I apologize. I might have even seen someone flinch when I said that.
Well, that was, that was me.
I think John was probably throwing something at me about that point. It's, it's the, what we call the Fawn Lake site.
Hope I scout like you.
Fawn Lake.
Yeah.
And hey, I'm, I'm just a gun here.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And thank you very much for the opportunity to keep helping here.
It's only money, honey. It's only money. We spent that twenty million thirty years ago.
So that brings us down to item eight, approval of vouchers, which we have done. And that brings us to your report, Carl. Manager report.
Got three tonight, Mr. Mayor. In the packet, we included the Public Works Director's letter to Chuck Tripp of DOT regarding that proposed project north of the tunnel. We wanted to make sure it reflected council's positions from the October fourth meeting. I would note that DOT now has a formal solicitation out requesting comments on that project that reflect none of the comments that was made, that were made by the council at the October fourth meeting. I instructed the Public Works Director to respond to that new solicitation with the letter we sent to Mr. Tripp and reiterate the city's position. But if there's anything else that we missed or you want added, let us know and we'll get that to DOT as well. Also in the packet, there was a memorandum from the Water Division Manager regarding the repairs to the Showen Bar water main. And again, I just want to commend David Johnston and the Water Division crews. That was an exceedingly difficult repair to make and they, they did a really great job and deserve a lot of credit. They worked a lot of long hours to get that done and minimize the disruption to the public. Take one and pass it along. What I'm passing around to the councils, a photograph that was taken Tuesday out at Swan Lake. And it, and it just shows how extremely low the lake levels are. We are now roughly three and a half weeks into a campaign with supplemental diesel generation. And I want to just speak to that briefly. The original plan was to take Swan Lake offline during the week and operate our diesels Monday throughout, Monday through Friday, twenty-four hours per day. We just got into that and we lost Diesel Generator Number One, which is a three point five megawatt Worthington unit that experienced a bearing failure and then remains offline as of today. At the end of last week, on that Friday, when we took the diesels down and were bringing back Swan Lake online, there was a cylinder head coolant leak that we discovered on Diesel Generator Number Four. When I was first advised of that, the estimate to get that unit back online was maybe three to four days, which would have necessitated us keeping Swan Lake online into that week. Through some really hard efforts of our mechanics, they were able to repair that leak and have Generator Number Four ready to go on that Sunday and have it back in service at mid-ninety. Regardless of everything we've done over the last three and a half weeks, five days a week, twenty-four hours a day, we had no meaningful restoration at Swan Lake. And starting this week, Andy and I made the decision that we really had to go twenty-four seven, and that's what we're doing now. And Swan remains offline. The low reservoir, reservoir levels combined with our two incidents of diesel engine failure, when you add that to what's going to be our increased seasonal load peaking coming up with the cold weather, we've given it a lot of thought. And I've made the decision that maybe out of an abundant sense of caution, that we really need to take the extra step. And I've authorized Electric to move it forward with the acquisition of two additional diesel-powered units that we're going to rent. There'll be two megawatts each, total of four megawatts, that we're going to get up here and get wired into our system to help us meet peak loads while these lake levels remain low. I'm going to do that under a declarative Uh, I'm gonna do that under a declaration of public emergency, just to expedite the acquisition of those units and get them up here, uh, as quickly as we can, uh, and we'll bring a formal declaration to the council with more refined cost, probably, uh, at the November first meeting. Uh, hopefully, uh, this is gonna be a limited effort in terms of additional load, but it's all gonna depend on whether, and if the lake levels don't, uh, return to normal levels, uh, we may have to do other measures before we're done, and, and we'll, we'll keep the council, uh, advised. Uh, in the interim, we're gonna continue with our efforts on social media, asking people to conserve where they can, uh, and I think we'll get through this, but, uh, long-term, we're gonna have to start looking at our diesels and their age and what we think is gonna be future capacity, and we're probably gonna be looking at a major capital initiative sooner rather than later. Um, Andy and his staff are here tonight, if you have questions for them, but that's where we are, we think this is a most prudent move we can make at this time, and, you know, the intent is just to make sure we have a reliable source of power for the community, so that's all I got.
Any questions for Carl? So, Carl, we're gonna keep these diesels probably through the winter because we, we have the potential freeze-up in another month, and so we may still, even if we get a return on water, uh, we're probably gonna have to augment that with some diesel power.
It could be, and, and the good news is, the generator that we took down for, the second generator that we're rewinding, uh, we hope to have, uh, back in service if not by the end of this week or early next week. Uh, the other thing I saw today on the news was a no on winter forecast, and for Alaska, they're predicting a warmer winter than normal, so maybe we won't get the freezing and we'll get some more infill to the lakes if the wet weather returns, we have the more epic summers as my administrative assistant predicted early on. Um, Andy, have I missed anything?
No, it's, uh, our, if you don't mind me, our concern is feeding peak, and of course, as the weather gets a little cooler, that peak in the morning results will peak in the evening, and, and our biggest concern is if we get another diesel failure, uh, we don't have sufficient water, uh, to make that peak, and then the worst thing that could possibly happen is you end up with a situation requires rolling blackouts. So I do want you to know that we did confer and, uh, what was the expression here, twenty-thousand-foot overview here of, uh, of managing blackouts, um, and they're, they're not anything wrong, and, but we have to figure out where everything is. Admiral Hope was really especially, uh, uh, good at this, so there's level one, level two, or tier one, tier two, tier three priorities in towns, uh, to give you some example, uh, things like hospital, airport, public safety, uh, those would be tier one. Uh, on the tier three side would be things like schools, grocery stores, and so we took all the, all the feeders, uh, across, we had something like fourteen feeders, and divide them in zones, number them, and then locate all the various things, communications, hospital, airport, schools, and then how that would be rotated if, if push came to shove. And again, this is only for a peak, uh, so as we get some of the other generators back, uh, we get a little bit of water, uh, this rain that's supposed to come, it'll give us free water, we can run Beaver Falls One on free water, uh, we'll get Beaver Falls Three back, uh, so that all gives us headroom in terms of riding these peaks. Uh, but just to be sure, uh, we thought that it's gonna be a long winter with the diesel campaign, we'll get two more of these, uh, they come in, in, in container units, two megawatts very common, uh, get two headed this way, and then they're, they're available, uh, as opposed to going through, uh, rolling blackouts. The other issue, if I may, is, is, uh, where do you put them? So we thought the easiest place to put it, uh, would be Bailey. We have access to fuel there, access to, uh, a substation, the connections could be very easily made. Uh, well then we wound in, wound up in permitting issues, so Bailey's already permitted, and these reciprocating engines, you know, they have air quality permits, uh, and it's interesting is what they call, uh, if you were to use them just for load following, that would be one issue, if you use them for emergency, that would be another, so, uh, we make sure that we'd be using them for emergency, emergency apparently, there's, there's more latitude. So, uh, we also looked at other places to put them as well, but anyway, that's, that's where we are there.
It's work in progress, we don't have all the answers, but we're living there.
Mark, did you have a question?
I did. How long would you anticipate for the arrival and the ability for those generators to be online?
Well, we spent about a week sourcing and we got a pretty good idea, uh, when they can get here, I'm gonna say that probably they get here in, in two weeks, about that, that, that time, um, and then probably an additional week or two to get them all interconnected, uh, and so that was critical to get them here as opposed to having a problem and then ordering them. Uh, and the other thing too, these are rentals, and there's things called rental agreements, and so that paperwork has to go through, right? Uh, so we got that pushed through, uh, and then as far as the time, they, they rent by the month, and if you don't use them, that's the, the least, the least cost, as you use them, the cost escalates, uh, so, uh, we don't anticipate using these much, but if we do, they'll be available, and I'm looking at four to six months. I'm hoping in four to six months, things will return back to normal and we'll be, we'll be through the worst of this.
Thank you, Andy. Anything else? Ending out with management. City clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City, city attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Uh, Pupra agenda items. Mayor and council comments. Mr. Goose?
Well, I suppose not much, but since this is the last meeting, it, uh, pretty will be here. Thank you, Katie, it's a great pleasure. And good luck.
And me?
I only can echo what he said about Katie, but I already have plans that she can't leave the building, so.
Councilmember Bergeron?
Um, just good luck in the retirement canyon, go see the world.
Vice Mayor Zingy?
Thank you very much, Katie, for all the help you gave me, especially as a new council person when I started, you know, I bugged you quite a bit, but I appreciate all the assistance you gave me. And I've spent, um, today at Ted Ferry, and I'll be spending the next two days there, and the young woman who operates that facility for us does an incredible job. I mean, she's bouncing all over the place, there's the, um, ANS A&amp;B convention, and I'm there recording that, and so there's a lot of demands on her to, you know, get stuff for people, organize, and she's, she's on it, she's happy, she's, I think, it, she's really doing a great job, um, so I wanted to make sure and note that.
Councilmember Kay?
Um, just wanted to congratulate staff on, on two proj, two, two recent completions of projects, one was the, the Showen Bar emergency, the other one was the, uh, was the Bar Harbor emergency, you know, in terms of the, and, uh, it's interesting because we're always trying to plan for these large projects, and yet these are the sort of things that just keep happening anyway, you know, these things we aren't planning for, these, these little emergencies, um, you know, right now we're having a water emergency and, and I, I agree with staff's plans to bring in the, the extra generators. I, I, one thing I thought was kind of interesting is that, you know, I've been hearing all this, well, we're gonna have this big rainstorm that's gonna help us, it's one to two inches. That's a normal day most Octobers, that's not gonna do squidly dot, you know, I mean, really, I mean, it's, yeah, compared, compared to when we had two inches in all of September, I get that, but this is not a big, this is not a big life-saving storm, we are, we've got a serious problem here with, with the rainfall, and it's not getting better, and it's not predicted to get better this, this year, so.
I never saw that year's one either.
Yeah, one to two, ooh, big storm, no, this is not a big storm, this is like, this is Thursday, you know, so. Um, and I also wanna, wanna thank Clerk Suter for, uh, her efforts in, uh, keeping us all in line here, because that's really what a clerk does, very quietly behind the scenes, they, 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 they prevent, um, councils from making situations worse, hm, and for the past, you know, and for the past, you know, X amount of years, honestly, it makes us feel old, I think, a hundred years, yeah, a lot, a lot of years, she, she has, she has done a remarkable job of making sure that we're, we have what we need to do, and that we also have the support to, to get things done, and I think that's really, yeah. Um, we've been very lucky in Ketchikan, we've had a lot, we've had a lot of good clerks. Um, I, I, I do a lot of, um, reading of other newspapers in other, in other communities for part of one of my various jobs, and it's interesting how often they're either getting rid of clerks, looking for clerks, uh, trying to find clerks, pissed off with the clerk they have, we don't have that stuff here, we really don't, and, uh, thank you.
Councilmember Flor?
Katie, it's been a pleasure, thank you for your service, and all the best to you and your family in the journey.
So, I like to thank Katie, and I worked with Katie as, as, you know, as one of Carl's employees during the landfill, and when I had questions in regards to different things that had happened in the past in regard to regulations and other things, she was of wealth of information. And then when I first became a council member, uh, she was extremely helpful, I mean, there were odd things that would come up, and I'd just give her a call and she was of wealth of information and point you in the right direction to help find an answer, and I certainly appreciate that. Um, and then we talk, you know, uh, about the rest of the city staff, the Water Department, amazing job. Uh, our mechanics out at Bailey, I mean, they're doing a yeoman's job out there trying to keep everything running and, and working the shifts that they're doing, and we see that all over the city, it, it's not something, it's more the norm than it is the exception, I think, and, uh, I agree with everybody in their comments in regards to, um, treating our employees right and, and do that process, and there will be a process, and, uh, we'll, we'll get the right information and then we'll make a decision how we perform with that. Um, if you read in the reports, did, uh, we got the tax report, uh, quarterly tax report back to where we're at, we're a little bit ahead of the game, we're doing fairly well with those, um, that, that's good to see. Um, and then at the bottom of our, our agenda, we get into the, uh, water report, and so I always take a glance at that to see what we're using on our water. And, and I wonder how we handle these, but Keybank had a twenty-three-hundred percent increase in their water, you see Jay went from a thousand gallons a month to twenty-four thousand gallons a month, and I just don't understand how that happens. It's, it's, and then we have, yeah. And then we have another, another company here in town, they went up four hundred percent in, in regards to their water usage, and, and so those things kinda, you know, concern me a little bit as we, we talk about things, and I, I know there's still companies that are using free-flowing potable water to run air conditioning systems and things like that, and so, uh, I think that the sooner we get on to the metered system and, and we're billing by that, the quicker some of these things will correct themselves, because they'll be watching their own meter a lot closer, uh, because it has a cost, you know, um, because it isn't, and, and especially when you start thinking about the conversation we had tonight, um, if, if you think about filtration and how are you gonna pay for that, everybody should pay, uh, not any more, but not any less than the share they do, and so that's where metering really comes into play, because it costs a lot when you go into filtration for a thousand gallon of water, and we're gonna have to, gonna have to figure that out if we don't. Um, but I just wanted to, to thank our, our employees throughout the city for their work, and, and we're not trying to brush them aside or anything else, we're just trying to make sure that we make a informed, accurate decision that best meets the city's needs and the employees' needs, so bear with us, I would hope. Um, so that brings us down to, uh, we have some executive sessions. When we get started with those. Okay, so the first executive session, request for, uh, negotiation amendment to berth four lease agreement, uh, to undertake facility modifications to accommodate post-pattern access for the two thousand nineteen cruise ship season, Ketchikan Company. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to declare that consistent with the City Manager's memorandum dated October ninth, two thousand eighteen, it is in the best interest of the City Council to discuss negotiation of an amendment to the lease and the definitive agreements between the city and Ketchikan Dot Company LLC related to expansion of berth four to accommodate larger vessels in executive session in accordance with KMC two oh four oh two five A one and three, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
And then moving to the second, any special? And another pick from the board?
Goose?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Gage?
Yeah.
With that, we'll be set. Now, we'll come back into, uh, order, uh, executive, uh, we gave management directions, um, and we'll move on to item number two, request for executive session potential litigation regarding Viger Alaska LLC's performance of the contract obligation under contract number seventeen dash thirty-six berth three barge overhaul. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Vice Mayor.
I move the City Council to declare that consistent with the City Manager's request dated October ninth, two thousand eighteen, it is in the best interest of the City Council to go into executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Court Code two point zero four, point zero two five A one and three, to discuss potential litigation regarding Viger Alaska LLC's performance of its contractual obligations under contract number seventeen dash thirty-six mark berth three barge overhaul, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to discuss potential litigation strategies with the attorney-client privilege.
Certainly. Please call order.
Gage?
Yes.
Bertrand?
Aye.
Zingy?
Yes.
Piper?
Sure.
Flora?
Yes.
Goose?
Yes.
Hello darkness, my name is. Speaker, sir? All right, we're back on. We've come back to order, um, we've had an executive session, gave management, uh, direction, that moves us on to item B, if we get the Ketchikan Public Utilities, request for executive session, KPU communication, decision, employee retention, and conference phase strategy. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to clarify it's in the best interest of the City to discuss-
Yes.
Kiper?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Bertrand?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
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 Zingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Shoo.
Flora?
Yes.
Goose?
Yes.
All right, we're back on. We've come back to order. We've had an executive session, we gave the management direction, that moves us on to item B, Ketchikan Public Utilities, request for executive session, KPU and Telecommunication Division employee retention and compensation strategy. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to declare it's in the best interest of the city to discuss competitive strategies and options of KPU's Telecommunication Division relating to employee retention and compensation in executive section in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.225, Section A, Section 1, which includes the need to discuss the subjects the knowledge which would clearly have an immediate impact on the finances of the city.
Second. Then move in second, any discussion? We've had some big executive session.
I'll call. Goose?
Aye.
Flora?
Yes.
Goose?
Yep. That brings us to the last motion of the night, right?
This will move. Motion, the course is already...